We're allowed now. See you.
Do you, uh, depending this, uh, what was that meeting? We will call the order. And acknowledgement, we acknowledge that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Indigenous peoples who have been stewards of the land since time immemorial and in such complete land, plant and stores and people with honour and respect. Adoption of the open session agenda. We resolve this to council of the corporation to backup, but hereby approved of the open session agenda dated November the twenty-sixth, twenty-four, as we said. Move the second, move by, uh, completing the second council given all over the paper. Here, thank you. No, any, uh, that person, uh, two or any seeing none. Uh, as you can see, the mayor now there is on screen. Uh, he's attending by zoom, hopefully it's, he's working on. Um, one of the business, twenty twenty-four Ontario economic summit come to be mild, so we'll, uh, put the resolution out. We have resolved that the council of the corporation without a backup. It's hereby received a verbal update from council value mild with respect to attending at the twenty twenty-four Ontario economic summit that presented the move of the second, I might remove it. The secondary, the council, uh, Heather.
Thank you, deputy mayor. So, uh, over Wednesday night and into Thursday, I attended the Ontario Economic Summit, uh, down in the big smoke, um, at the Metro Toronto Convention Centre. Uh, the, the theme of the, uh, convention was, uh, future proving Ontario. So a lot of discussion was around artificial intelligence, a lot of, uh, conversation was around energy. Uh, there is a shortage, as we know, in the data back up regarding energy throughout the province, so all the powers that be are working towards that in a variety of different ways, Bruce Power was there. Um, so they, there's nothing concrete, but everybody is aware that it needs to happen. Uh, the AI conversation was interesting, some of the pieces that I thought were most interesting had to do with where we are in terms of medicine. And, uh, our universities are graduating very, very experienced people, they are working towards finding machinery that can make medicine easier, operations, tools that work. However, we're very busy not looking as a province, not looking to help support the graduation of that information and that data. So one of the presenters, uh, her name is Dr Christine Allen. And she actually ends up taking all of her inventions into the States or into China or into Europe because there's no venture capital available in Ontario. So we have some of the best minds and they're coming out of our universities, universities in the best ways. Moving towards artificial intelligence from a medicine perspective, but we're not getting much support. And from a government perspective, they don't, they don't, their opinions, of course, or that they don't look at this as a partnership. That if the province invested in those tools, they could get paid back at the end of the day. Because these are the things that are going to be out, be out and be sold. They're actually really good products that would help us in a variety of ways. So far, our province is hesitant or they don't have big buckets of money available to take these inventions forward. So I thought it was, I thought that was cool. There is lots of, um, uh, reconciliation in Indigenous conversation that occurred. Um, one of my takeaways from it all was that at the end of the day, thank God for the women of, of those communities because that is who is carrying the message forward in a big way. Even the chief was a woman this year, her name was, uh, Claire Salt. And, uh, one of the panels talked about what reconciliation means from a terms of education, in terms of money, in terms of respect, in terms of jobs. And, um, one of the women from one of the learning, uh, communities in Northern Ontario commented that there are Indigenous people who live beside these mines everywhere, yet they're so hesitant to be hired. So they are working towards trying to solve that piece, so that's, uh, what reconciliation means to that. One of the women from the bank said that you can't, if you live on a reserve, you are not entitled to ever get any money. So when your house starts falling apart, you can't go and borrow a mortgage because you don't own anything. So it doesn't give the bank any opportunity to go and help anybody rebuild a home because the bank has nothing to recover in the event something goes wrong. So this, this cycle of not being able to find any cash to help improve your life situation, the bank is moving towards that. Then another one of the commentators, these were all women by the way, uh, talked about how from an education perspective, we are, you know, reconciliation needs making sure that we educate anybody and everybody in the province, not only from the Indigenous standpoint, but to make sure that education is provided. So, uh, I really enjoyed that. Um, two politicians were there, uh, Libya Chow was there, she opened and talked about, I think her biggest message was in Toronto and if anybody was paying attention, uh, Dawn, uh, let's just remind for the liberal part of last time. Anyways, he's a brand, I think, uh, cities are waiving, uh, uh, development fees. If you are building, of course, we don't have them here, but the big cities are moving towards removing development fees completely. There, uh, Toronto has said, we're not going to charge you're building portable housing, based on what they're referring to as to portable housing, no development fees. Uh, she was very proud to announce that what used to take five years from a planning standpoint has now been down to two years. And in some circumstances, the smaller pieces are occurring in six to eight months. So that was their message is that from their building perspective, uh, their, their red tape has really eliminated some delays for them. Um, uh, Mr Ford was in, uh, the premier, his biggest take was, um, that I'm sure everybody's read it recently, they're rebating WSIB. So, um, they had to think of two billion, two billion dollar reserve. And so if you own a small business and let's say his example was you have a cake shop, you have five people or less, you're probably going to look at over forty-five hundred dollar rebate. Uh, you own a construction company, you have fifteen people or less, you're looking at about a forty-five thousand dollar rebate. You have a hundred, uh, fifty employees or more, you might be looking at a seventy thousand dollar rebate. So for any of our local businesses that you've been paying some WSIB into, uh, look up this program, make sure you pay attention to it because the province is funding uh, WSIB money cut based on their surplus. And I wonder where it would stand for the municipality because I'm assuming we pay WSIB, WSIB. Now, I don't know where, I don't know if he's going to just de-privatize pieces or municipal pieces, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look any further and I've not read. But that sort of thing, they think right away, I mean, we have a hundred employees, uh, how many, a company of fifty?
Under fifty.
Yeah, so, oh, so, you know, we probably pay a whole bunch of WSIB. So what would that mean for us, uh, at the municipality? And I don't know that it means anything, I'm just saying, that's what my manager may have, although I was there. Um, my favorite, um, uh, session was an ambassador from the United States to Canada, his name is, uh, David Cohen. What a beautiful man, he's American, he came and he, his real message was even though everything we're reading in the news today is about terrorists, is please stay calm. Do not, uh, you know, we are the United States' largest, largest trading partner. So he really believes the future is going to be better than what we're reading in the headlines. He said, there's no way that, and he obviously is going to lose his job in two months, he works for the Biden Harris government. He does not work for the Trump government, so he just kept saying, uh, just relax, relax. As the largest trading partner of the United States, we have, we have to work these things out. So he said, just relax. And Premier made the same kind of statements, although something in news today was a little nastier, but he made, he also, uh, Premier Ford also made a comment about, you know, we're going to work on this trade thing. He spoke so highly of Canada, I couldn't help but be super proud. He said, I've been through every part of this country, I've been in every province, I've been in every territory, he said, I've met business owners, big, small, nonprofits. Everywhere I've gone in this country, I've been welcomed. He said, it has been my absolute pleasure to serve, uh, as the ambassador to Canada. And he said, when it comes to ambassadorships, he said, I'm the envy of everybody else who does what I do for different countries. He said, you have a beautiful place and you should make sure you preserve it. And he said, it has been my pleasure to work for it. It was really, really nice to hear, he was such a nice voice. Lastly, I will say we did get our two minutes of fame with Minister Calandra. Um, I was invited to a, uh, like a round table. Uh, they had very specific, uh, four buttons, land use, red tape, uh, labor shortages, and I can't remember what the third one was or the fourth one was because they all meant nothing to us. But I did get an opportunity to have my say, I, as soon as, I was sure, I'm sure I was the smallest representative in the room for the, the size of our municipality. There weren't a whole lot of other municipalities in the room, and actually there were more builders, uh, energy people, there were other things that were there. Uh, planners, I think there were a couple of planners there. So I stuck my hand up very quickly and, uh, so I was acknowledged right away, so, uh, bankrupt was first to the plate. Um, I said to him, thank you very much for being here, all of these issues really don't mean all that much to us, we need money. Please, please, please make sure that when we get ready for looking for funding for our infrastructure, that we're not ignored. Said, if there is anybody else here in the room, number seven, nobody else put their hand up, I said, if there's anybody else here from number seven, you know, we always feel like we are ignored, we feel like we're never given a fair shake, just like everybody else is, but that's what we really need. We need ratepayers, we don't need more tourism, we don't need, we need to fix our water and sewer and, and enhance and, uh, extend our water and sewer services. So he gave me my two and a half minutes to, you know, beep off and then he very kindly looked me directly in the eye and said, thank you very much and thank you for bringing all these issues to the table. Yes, we are aware that the big guys south of seven are always taking all of the money. And he said there was more money coming on stream. So, I don't know what that meant, he didn't say it was earmarked for anything specific, but he did say, uh, yes, we hear you, thank you very much. We, we did get a voice, the town of Bangor got a voice in front of the Minister of, uh, Municipal Affairs for about two minutes at the start of the meeting, and I think every time we get that moment to get a voice out regarding the bank, the town of Bangor, it's, it's an important thing, so. Those were all my takeaways, if anybody had any questions, it was right downtown, they have a good thing, I'd rather please, I didn't go to that. But, um, and the economic summit, they say, was the highest attended in like something like ten or twelve years or something, so. Um, it was subdued compared to lots of other conferences I've been to. But, um, the information was really, really important. And, uh, there are a lot of people making sure that the future of Ontario is, uh, in the right space in a variety of ways, is what I took away.
Thank you for speaking up for that, you were there, that was, that's good, yes. Still any question? Would the resolutions be moved and tested all over the paper? Good, that's clear, thank you. Uh, I can be North Aitse holiday hamper program. We have resolved that the council of the corporation has done a backup. It's hereby allowed the North Aitse holiday hamper program to use in Grand Bay at the town public workshop on December the second, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to four PM for the purpose of assembling and distributing holiday, uh, hamper to those that need. Can I do this all together? And further that in the event that we're in a stormstorm and clouds are deployed, the North Aitse holiday hamper program would be required to have a backup plan and with the understanding that the workshop would not be available. So the move, the second, the council, uh, Eastman, any discussion?
Although, just a little question. It says, if the piles are deployed, they would be able to, or so. Let's see, kind of a.
It, the, the, the problem with that, I mean, is, is, um, it's just congestion with our clouds coming in and sand. Um, the afternoon, like they, they assemble all the, the baskets in the garage and then they have a, a flow of vehicles come in at pickup times. Um, so if we have trucks coming in, they have been sold, workers running around in the yard. Um, it's just not a good idea to have vehicles public in there, so.
Although, fair to say, that's clear, thank you. I can receive resident questionnaire analysis. Um, staff and court.
You want to put the resolution?
Well, sure. We have resolved that the council of the corporation has done a backup. It's hereby received the public report that presented and further that the council needs staff to implement the quick line as well as create a report based on these survey results regarding possible opportunities for improvement, so have a move in the secondary, Miles, second by Johnson, Lawrence, and you're on.
Before I say anything, don't shoot the messenger. Keep in mind it's all respondents to the survey. It is representative, I mean, the survey did, uh, produce three hundred and thirty-five people, which was about a ninety-five percent confidence rate. Um, I'll wait for this to get pulled up before we dive in, but there was really, really good data that even though some of the responses from survey respondents are not pleasant to read and are not reflective of what we're actually doing, it's still good to hear that because we'll get a better idea of what's not getting translated for the people. So. We can do it without seeing it, so. Everybody has an under package, so if you do want to look over the actual, uh, pieces from the survey, you'll be able to physically see the polls. Um, but the data is still important and I told all of that, I didn't know what we were talking about that anyway. Uh, okay. So, uh, accuracy, I'll just really quickly touch that there's always a dropping off of information, so as you go through surveys, people get bored, flip away from it, they get a phone call, the dog needs to go pee, they have to leave. So they start a survey, they don't finish it on the way. So we started at five percent chance that the results are not accurate or representative, ended at six and a half, which is really, really bad. Uh, I would say it does validate that the surveys can represent what the survey respondents feel and what the town feels, but obviously there's always differences. So who participated in our survey? So, results were representative, we had, the average person who replied was a full-time resident, so someone who lives here all the time, somebody who's married, either without kids. He was between thirty and sixty-five, like a fairly average adult in town, um, who has not read our asset management. So sixty-six percent of people did not read our asset management plan before they responded to the survey. So unfortunately, uh, it is a large document and it's to be expected that a lot of people will not pull a full asset plan up uh, and read that at leisure, and I'm sure you folks don't read that right before you jump into bed every night, but, uh, there's lots of really good information in it and obviously we urge people to read that in the town, lots of interviews reports. But it's just good to keep in mind that part of this is that they have not read that information prior to this. So. Most respondents are actually satisfied with the services, the reliability and condition of the services and the safety of the services, which is water, wastewater, community centers, roads, bridges, outdoor spaces and emergency services, so. Two out of three people are completely satisfied with everything that we're doing. So bear that in mind as you read the less positive comments. Based on the responses that we were provided, general respondents are looking for increase in service levels. So, think of that in terms of we're also looking for funding in these areas. Recreation, leisure and lifestyle, which is the Julie Center, your arena, your young Gannon Mark Center, that sort of thing. Roads and bridges, economic investments, which also means economic development, so business and improving commerce and count. Improved communication within the municipality. And then mixed response of outdoor spaces, so that's talking about our trails and our park stuffs and that sort of thing. Things that they think make things cost great or what would make things cost better. Safety in the community and safe roadways, one of which we do address by having a community safety and wellbeing committee, which is a great plus. Uh, that was ninety-one percent of respondents, so that's pretty good. Um, in eighty-six and eighty-four percent, affordable living and a moderate tax rate, everybody loves to live somewhere they can afford to live, that's pretty standard. Uh, and availability of employment. While we don't control that, some of the decisions that we make help influence that. It's interesting though, there is a contrast between what they think makes a place great and where they actually think the money should go. So, based on the respondents, the least important factor was attracting new residents, supporting vulnerable populations and preserving small town charm. Which is an interesting contrast because they actually said that supporting young families, which is a vulnerable population, was in their top most important. Along with the local economy and limiting cost increases. So again, fairly standard, we like to keep costs low, they want to see a place that they can live in. Money management was unfortunately a perception. So, again, I want you to keep in mind that even though it sounds unpleasant, the real thing that's important to note here is that even though this is the perception, all that means is that we're not doing a good enough job getting the information to them. Because it's a perception and not the truth. Eighty-eight percent of people believe the town is overspending or they are unsure if we're overspending. A big chunk of that being almost forty percent being unsure is people who just don't know. We can fix it. That's a fairly simple resolution. Um, do they feel that we're making the right infrastructure investments? Pretty mixed, there was a disagree and a strongly disagree. Um, but there's also again, people who do feel that we are and people who are unsure. So by recapturing that group that's unsure whether or not we're making good decisions, that evens it out. So again, big emphasis on education. Um, seventy-eight, so I think from seventy, seventy-eight percent are looking to pay for or want to pay for with their tax dollars, roadwork, utilities and emergency services, public property, so that again, that's parks and the, our, uh, public parking, that sort of thing. Uh, outdoor spaces and they get investing in the economy and doing act ads. And then how do they want to get that info? So this is the missing piece of they're not getting it right now, where should we be doing better to get it to them? The balance majority, surprisingly, are actually online. So forty-four percent use the website, fifty percent use social media, thirty-three percent use email. So they're looking for us to put it online and to make it publicly available to them in a way that they can see it, share it and respond to it. They still like print and they still like in-person sessions, but far, far less than anything online. So, now we look at the actual comments. I did, all things fair, shred the comments down a lot. So we did get the official comments, I have a list and a record, if any of the council members want to actually read them, you're more than welcome. Um, they're all anonymous, you won't see who it came from. Um, but some of those obviously are not, uh, appropriate, I would say, for the public eye, so we made it more pleasant to look for. But the themes are all generally here and I did rank them, uh, based on what was most prevalent versus what was least prevalent. And then just made sure that we emphasized what we can and can't do because there's two sections in here that actually have nothing to do with you. Uh, so the first one, the most prevalent in comments was downtown accessibility and aesthetic changes. Essentially it boils down to just a lot of mixed feelings about the downtown and making changes to sidewalks and trees and planters and all of that. We knew that that was a very divisive conversation and we've heard lots about it on the social media, so that's not surprising that that's the number one. Housing affordability and property taxes, obviously half of that you can't control. Um, housing affordability has been its own crisis and a little bit. But property taxes, we can take into account that residents are looking at hopefully finding ways to shift towards a lower tax rate for themselves. And that could translate to several different things, so our library housing project, that's going to translate to some of that for seniors and those sorts of people who are living in large homes that could downsize to smaller apartments. That sort of stuff actually does help them contribute to getting to that lower tax rate without us having to change what we're spending. We don't have a way to spend less than we're spending right now, we know that every day everything gets more expensive, but there are ways to reduce it for. It is also very important to note that there are mixed results in a lot of this survey, partially because of the way that it's worded, but I also wonder if part of it is misinformation in the public, so they, in part of the survey, they responded that they didn't care whether or not we attracted new residents. But then one of the largest comments was that property taxes are the reason we discourage potential newcomers and they would really like us to encourage more newcomers to town. So, very mixed, very mixed, you'll see that a lot as you go through the presentation too. Um, homelessness, I mean, we all know that that's top of everyone's minds, unfortunately, I've had to note that even though it's a concern for citizens, it's not something that's managed by the town. That's an OPP in Hastings County issue, so anything to do with homelessness and general public safety resulting from homelessness, unfortunately, is not something that's in the purview of the town, we do everything that we can, but we just don't have the scope. Rapid community spaces, um, that pool really sticks around for some reason. Uh, so even though that came up in the comments, uh, it was really important to note that they do want us to see more use out of the community center and more use out of, uh, the library space. Both of which, we know both of which have been in all sorts of conversations lately, which is great. Again, probably just an education piece to make sure people know we're actually going forward with the library, we're going forward with the library. Uh, and then obviously, the, the arena is top of mind. Uh, roads and infrastructure, uh, big emphasis on rural roads needing regular safe maintenance. And public washrooms were widely requested, so looking for access to that for public events and that sort of thing. Again, partially the education, we do have several public washrooms available, um, but maybe they're not utilizing them because we don't know they're there. Financial transparency and spending priorities, residents are critical of funds allocated to aesthetic improvements over essential services without clear understanding of explanation and benefits to the community. It's a huge education, if you make decisions at this council table, you've spent years and years and years reading your council packages for some or most of the people at the table. You understand why we make the decisions that we make at the table. I don't think it's translated to the general public, so we got to work on it. Residents suggest policies to attract essential businesses and small, and support small local ventures. Um, again, not in our power, but expanding retail options with box stores and affordable shopping. Um, there's not a way for us to attract that, but it is something for us to keep in mind, talking to groups like Hastings County, uh, who have more access to potentially attract bigger business. Uh, and they certainly do that with a lot of those downtown storefronts that they recover and all of their programming and just got tons of new people in to support small business, so hopefully that will change in the near future, but that's also new programs, it's been around eight months, a year, yeah. Um, local government and accountability, again, you can't control this. They ask for a more diverse council membership, that is completely in the hands of the public. They pick who they vote for, obviously, we try to make it clear what everyone's, I don't want to say soapbox them for, but I'll use the others. Um, but you try to make your campaigns clear when you have them, so definitely something to think about when you come to voting time. Parks and recreation, some believe funds should be prioritizing accessibility improvements and maintenance to support a range of community activities. We just finished that huge, huge accessibility update at the arena. Um, and I mean, that's been, every grant we've done in the last six, eight months has been for accessibility, so. It is definitely being done, definitely being worked on. And then finally, communication, frustration over limited communication about spending. So they want to know why we're spending the money and what we're spending the money on, which is a, a fair ask. Part of it, I would say, is attendance at council meetings. I would love to see more people in the gallery, I'd love to see more people watching online, but that's just reality. Realistically, the only things we can do from this, um, without a deeper dive, working on something like the very large projects that we have done with reports like making bankrupt and that sort of thing, and building bankrupt. Um, all of those aside, the quick wins are a bi-weekly response on social media. So picking out individual comments and actually responding to them in a public way, so it's transparent. I mean, even individual comments that say, you know, you're not working on accessibility, would be so easy for us to to wash and put out there on social media that, hey, you've done this, this and this, we are working on it. Um, sharing key messages from plans like our strategic plan. Um, so I mean, they might not pick up that huge document, read it from their bedtape for thirty or forty pages a night, but we could take some key messages out of that and make it bite-sized and make it something shareable that people will actually read. Continue work on updating our web portal. Um, so there is a web survey, you did direct staff to go ahead and do surveys, so that starts, comes out December first. So people can start having their say that way, they can start working on making that more transparent and accountable and accessible to folks. And then directing us back to go look at the framework, see what else we can take out of this survey, uh, the management group. And see if there's more work that we can do that would make this more successful. I mean, you told us we bought at the council table, but there's also lots of stuff to do to help support you with that, and I think that this is a good place to start. I know it's frustrating to read some of it because it seems not so positive, but the message that we're really getting is we just need to give them more information.
Take it, yeah, yeah, and that seems, like, it sounds like it was a really worthwhile and they would, we would all get, get certain that comment. Mayor, would that make it come? Okay, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, deputy mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I, I think we have an opportunity to start because what I'm hearing so much is, is, uh, regarding, uh, getting information out there, and I know in past years we have tried to really encourage people to participate in the, in the budget process and to attend the meetings, because I think that's where so much of this information does come out. to really encourage people to participate in the, in the budget process and to attend the meetings because I think that's where so much of this information does come out. Uh so I, I'm not sure what staff think we can do differently than we've done in previous years to try and get uh more people or the public uh engaged in the budget process and uh even as Jennifer said, even get them to watch it online, uh et cetera, because I think so many of the questions or comments that I uh heard mentioned there, uh a lot of them get answered through that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any comment? Those are mine.
I think one of the things that is, the most important thing I do as a counselor is I'm sitting in a room or I'm sitting at an event or I'm sitting and somebody makes a comment that is so far out in the left field, but is not even close to the truth that has happened, not even close. And so I think it's one of my number one responsibilities is I think when every one of us is out in the community, if we hear something that we know is not true and sort of, we all walk out of this room, we've built our consensus, having that messaging about what really is the truth and what really is going on is such an important thing for us to do. We have to sit here at the table and make decisions, but we're out there in the public, all of us, every day. Up right on the main track every day and hearing what our community has to say. And I think it's so important that we as counselors uh stay positive and talk about all the wins and talk about all the, all the really good stuff that is happening. And I think this is actually really good. This is way better than, and, and a really three hundred and something, that's like ten percent of our, almost close to like that should be big, having that many people respond is huge. And so it's our job to make sure that we fight against misinformation.
I, I agree with all the speed, it's speed information uh that we can work ahead on. And the uh put it on social media is read, however, there are a huge number of residents that aren't in the social media. So that's one of the communications lacks, I think we really lack as a town. And realize it's expensive, but we have a connection with the newspaper. I think we need that um bi-weekly on social media, but I think it also has to go in local print. So that the ones that don't have computers and don't have iPhones can still be ordered, where, where what's going on. And I think your idea of a positive reinforcement every two weeks, that, that's an excellent thing. And just to keep the people informed of what's going on and make it a two-way street. We, we lack this communications out there and you, you can explain it to different people, but it, it seems to stop, it doesn't go anywhere, so it's frustrating in that way, but I think if we try to do a better job, I'm not sure how much we'll pass, I'd have to staff look at, hopefully a gain in our budget is moving forward, but I think we need to do a better job of that. I know we do handouts in our tax bills, but most of it at the bottom line and chuck it out, so it's, but it's nice to put it there anyway, for sure, so. Anyway, good job.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I think it is important that they know that they're important, that they, you know, their opinion is valued. And yeah, oftentimes the information they have isn't entirely correct, but yeah, back to what Council Miles said, I spend probably over half of my workday talking to constituents, stopping just to say, hey, I'm happy with what's happening, or have you ever thought of this, or I hate this, or whatever it is, but knowing that we do give a rip and we are willing to listen, we are willing to do, you know, what it takes.
Well, then, you know, all of us are good sounding, like when we're the public, quite often you get asked about something
Yep.
and so you can bring them up to date, so.
Well, yeah, I guess one other thing I want to add is, is uh the new sound system for the meetings, I think is going to be a huge improvement. I, I talk to a lot of people who like to watch movies when they get older or the YouTube videos when they have time, but the biggest complaint I always get from people is they can't hear.
Yeah.
So I think the new, the new audio system that we're gonna put in is, is gonna be a big improvement. People be able to really see what goes on at council and how you guys are making the decisions.
Yeah, Paul, you have a comment?
Sorry Jake, I couldn't hear you. It is, I, I will tell you, being on this, it is it is tough to hear everybody pretty clearly. So.
Jake, can you hear me Paul?
I don't know, her comments on the same thing that we can't hear, so.
Yeah.
We, I gotta explain to them. It's coming, we're working on it, hopefully.
It's been ordered, I promise.
So, any of you want to?
The, they said six to eight weeks, about two and a half weeks ago, so we're hoping for, for soon. We'd like to have it installed before we get to the new year, but we'll have to see what they're, it's all, it's all based on manufacturers, so.
So it's all in order, that's good.
Absolutely.
Sure, one more comment. I think uh key to doing the survey is great and it's they're really cheap to do is that over time, if we do this every year, we can charge, you know, people perceptions that it's hopefully changing for the better. And also tracking residents if they, their needs change. And we can see where our focus needs to be.
We need that input tomorrow when we're gonna get us.
One of the final comments I'd like to make is, is residents and we all agree that we want to do changes, but municipal politics, governed by the province, it's a snail's place to change, since you can't change it overnight. And I think that's the most frustrating part. I know it's frustrating for us around the table. It's also frustrating for an individual that doesn't, isn't aware of the fact you gotta have eighteen surveys and whatever before you can change the light bulbs, so it becomes quite a, quite an issue. To try to explain that to them is, is I think a, a good thing to do.
Although in favor of that presentation, thank you very much. The Dungan and Wistake Tipping Fee Schedule did resolve at council, the corporation kind of backdrop. Approve to propose Tipping Fee Schedule for the Dungan Wistake for the twenty twenty-five and men's schedule eight to final eighty-seven as twenty twenty-one throughout DT as present or a move in a second year and then we just uh move what comes to work in second, for example. Mark.
Okay, so this is just the annual uh update to the tipping fee schedule. Um if there were no proposed changes, I don't even have to bring it forward to you because you've already approved that CPI will be applied to the tipping schedule fee each year. Um as you may recall, we made a number of changes last year and had some pretty lively conversation. Uh we're not proposing to change any of that fee structure. The costs of fees that we put in place last year are, uh have been adequate and sufficient to cover our expenses and, and make sure that we can continue uh to operate the waste sites uh the way we need to and that we're required to by the Ministry of the Environment. Um I am bringing this word because there is one slight modification that I'd like to bring uh forward to you for consideration today. And that is with respect to uh the dumping of large bins of trash. Um prior to this amendment I put forward to you today, uh the fee was two hundred and seventy-five dollars to dump a standard bin. Um we, market rate for that bin is about four hundred and fifty. We charge our community partners four hundred and fifty, but a private business uh who's making revenue off of that business was only being charged two seventy-five, uh which is less than our business ratepayers were paying for their bag tags for a privileged amount. So the proposal to increase the tipping fees for just those large bins is solely to bring them into alignment with ministry standards and to ensure that folks who are putting large amounts of waste in a bin are paying the same amount for that waste as the business owner that's putting two bags at the curb. Uh so it's, it's an equal, or an equal proportion uh share of those costs. So that is the only amendment that I'm proposing to the tipping fee schedule this year, other than the standard two percent uh for this year's CPI increase. We always leave the CPI increase on the number that comes out in mid-November so that the tipping fees are in place by January first. Um we wouldn't be able to do that if we waited until the December notice. It's up on December sixteen or eighteen or whenever it is, uh because of Christmas closures and all that stuff, and then it created. So uh we've always done it for November dates and we've done that again, and for this year, that's coming in at two percent.
Any questions? I, I can't, I'm sure there uh you've got yellow highlights, that's proposed for this year going forward.
Those are big bins, yeah.
And they were all one seventy-five or?
Uh two seventy-five and then proportionately higher from there. So we've just started with the four hundred and made the proportional differences for the size of the bin.
For the question, go a little further.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Uh this is a question for the general manager. Um do you feel that, like in the case we're talking now, two percent actually covers our cost increases that we're seeing in an operation like the waste site?
Um well, it's hard, hard to know. Last year it was three point eight percent and we definitely didn't get further behind uh with that percentage. Um two percent is a lot less, half of three point eight, almost, so it is, it is significantly less. Um but we haven't seen significant cost escalations in the last several months with things like the cost of sending away bins of mattresses and couches, that cost has remained relatively stable, so um applying CPI is the best measurement uh that we have at this point. Having said that though, I will take an opportunity to say that you will be getting more reports from me in the spring uh with regard to a review of our bag tag policy and our tipping policies uh to reflect the fact that come July first, when the province takes over recycling, we are going to have um a huge financial hit to our waste management budget, um which we will need to look at and remedy. Um our bag tags haven't been increased in more than a decade. Um and our, our costs are way out of line for what is uh typical and traditional in both residential and uh business settings for waste disposal costs, so that will be something that we'll be looking at. We have used the revenue that we uh been able to generate from recycling in the past to offset our costs associated with waste management in general, uh but we are going to lose that revenue as of July, so um we will need to find a way to make up that difference to continue to provide the waste services that we provide today.
Jake, can you give him another question?
Uh yes, I have a comment. So uh tying this in with the survey results that Jennifer presented to us, and I know that we have published this a few times about what's going to happen in July uh with the change in the blue box program. I think we need to constantly be posting this, uh that what is going to happen. And the fact that people will not be able to go to the waste site with their recycling anymore, which you know, they'll still be able to go with their garbage, but not with their recycling, so. Uh and the impact that it's going to have on the business community. And the fact that a lot of this is going to probably end up in our waste site, so again, the need for the uh, the bag tag uh review because two things, we're gonna have to be seeing a lot more garbage and uh we're gonna be losing a lot of revenue because we were being very efficient the way we collected our garbage and recycling together, uh you know, the way we save costs and that. That cost saving is going out the window now because we really can't reduce our costs dramatically and we're going to lose all the revenue from the recycling. And the whole aim of this program was to, that municipalities would not be losing money or they would be getting their costs recovered. Well, for us, it's the opposite way. You know, so I think it's extremely important that we constantly uh through our websites, social media, et cetera, to keep posting the message on what is happening on July first and the fact that this is a provincial program and the negative effect it's going to have uh on us, both financially, our business community and actually the general public who are quite accustomed to going down to the waste site to dispose of the recycling. None of that will be available.
It's, it's gonna be a real change and we haven't, we haven't got much information about the province.
We have not, no.
So I, I agree with it, uh for communication. I think we, we should have some kind of a meeting release, we put on the, on the website and leave it there and um.
What, what we know at this point is that the province will take over responsibility for recycling on July first. Uh we know that they have chosen a successful contracted service provider for our area. Um my efforts to make contact with that service provider have been unsuccessful to date. Um we know that they will be establishing a convenience depot for us, but they have not advised us where that will be or how that will operate or who will operate it. Um yeah, and we know that they will continue with curb site recycling pickup for residents to the end of the year, but we don't know what will happen beyond that.
Yes, no. Well, I think that uh, as the, as the mayor has mentioned, we need to predict as much as we can, it's come.
How would our hazardous waste be conducted when the province takes over? That's what continue?
That's a, that's a separate prog, program within the waste management structure, so how some hazardous waste days will continue the same way uh they are.
Has it been very successful?
Oh, we, we collect tons of hazardous waste in each of our, our days.
Hmm, it is well, it's well used.
They are, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a what, biannual?
Uh twice, two, sometimes three times a year, but always at least. Part of it depends on the availability of, there's only a couple companies that do them. Uh so it's getting in and getting your dates fixed before other people pick dates to make sure that you have all your dates and you try and share with, with everyone, so.
Uh just to reinforce again with the business community, because I know down south, when I speak to the mayors down there, all the businesses in the southern part of the county either already had arrangements or have easy access or arrangements to have somebody come and pick up their recycling. Up here, not so much, so I don't really think that the business community uh really understands the uh, the magnitude of this and the fact that they need to make arrangements for their recycling uh because it just cannot end up in our waste site. And I think our bag tag, uh future bag tag policy will probably discourage that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone, David? Bank of, I, I think need Bank of Business Improvement Area.
Attachment, two zero two four one one two seven, no need for consideration for business.
Uh I'll read the uh you want the first resolution that was to be resolved at the council, the corporation of Bank of this hereby receive the Bank of Business Improvement Area Board of Resignation Report for information purposes. And further, that, that council of the corporate town of Bank of this hereby accept the resignation of all Bank of Business Improvement Area Board of Management Members and the Executive Director effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, with regret, and we send all current appointments to the Bank of Business Improvement Area Board of Management. A movement and a secondary place for that. Move, uh move, come on, second, the council group. We get it, there.
Yep.
Um yeah, I use people for that.
So staff received a resignation from all the board members on November fifteenth, which included the VIA staff member also. So with uh no board in place currently, um the next step would be to place the VIA informants, so that the town can um deal with the remaining financial obligations of the VIA. The staff do require further direction on future of the VIA. Um and the report today, which is a side recommendation, um is recommending that the VIA be dissolved, which that process is outlined uh in the municipal act. And this recommendation is based on a number of inquiries and concerns that we've received over the last several months regarding the operation of the VIA. And um I will note, should council decide to dissolve the VIA, that process cannot be undone very easily. There's a legislative process to implement that VIA again. It's not as simple as implementing a bylaw again. Um and should they choose not to dissolve the VIA, it's important to note that those policies and procedures would need to be updated uh prior to any appointments of a VIA board. Uh the current policies are from twenty fifteen and do not align with the town's uh procedures currently. Um so yeah, formal call for applications would not occur until those policies have been revamped and adopted by council. And then there's also a part-time staff consideration um for the VIA functions if that board is continuing.
Uh Mayor Jake, you have a comment?
Just a, a, a point of order here. Did, did we vote on this first resolution or is this what's on the table right now? There's two resolutions here. Pardon me?
Just on the table.
Okay, because I think a lot of the discussion uh will come with the second resolutions.
It will. So this first one is just receiving that report, which has that information in it and then accepting.
has that information in it and then accepting the resignations that we.
Yeah, so I just think we should vote on that.
So we'll, we'll vote on the very first one.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. If we're gonna vote on the first two, but I wanted to leave a point.
Yeah, so we're just voting on the first one. So we see the resignation. Correct?
And the report, yes.
And the report, yeah.
Yes.
And the two moves in second. All those in there, there, thank you. Now the second. Be resolved that the council of the Corporation of Bank of this hereby declare the Bank of Business Improvement Area dormant effective immediately with the following financial stipulation. The staff be directed to establish a bank account with the same corporate signing out that we use badly to be used solely for business improvement area purposes. Transfer the existing balance of fund from the former business improvement area bank account to the Town of Bank of Bank Account. Be responsible for any activity for the account, including meeting any of the Bank of Business Improvement Area financial obligations as we be. Now that's, you want to end further?
We will.
And then and further, that the council of the Corporation of Bank of this hereby direct staff to begin the process to dissolve the Bank of Business Improvement Area. A movement and a second. Uh, move my call, seconded by uh, wait, uh, the waiting. Uh, Mayor Jenkins, would you speak on this?
Uh, yes, I would. Uh, I agree with the first part of the resolution, but not the second part. Um, speaking, I've had conversation with people, um, business people who would like to form a board. And based on the comments that we received from our clerk there about the difficulty or in reforming after it is uh, um, dissolved. Um, I would prefer that we, I would like to put forward that uh, and further that uh, uh, we defer this dissolution process for sixty days to give uh, business members an opportunity to express their desire to form a BIA board. Once they have done that, yes, we do have things that need to be done, as the clerk pointed out. Uh, but uh, yes, then then we could go ahead and do those, the things that are required to bringing everything up to date before we officially appoint a board. To do that work in advance and not have a board would seem to be a waste of time. And to dissolve it when there are, when there is a desire in the business community for the BIA to continue in a particular form, uh, I think would be counterproductive as well. So I I'm suggesting an amendment to the second part of that uh, resolution.
There's an amendment, okay. First goal discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I'm thankful that the mayor put that in there because we have, we have a thriving business community that started their own page. We talked about this before. It's called the merchants of Bancorp and they picked up what they felt was picking up the slack of what wasn't happening with the current BIA. Don't get me wrong, I appreciate what they've done. Um, but they felt that they just weren't getting the bang for their buck. And there were many things that they wanted to see happen um, that worked, such as events and promotion, these different things that happened in the past. So we have a community of business owners that I know we could build a board and have thriving volunteer base. And um, yeah, so to dissolve it would be a huge mistake because that is absolutely one hundred percent not what our business community wants. They don't want to build it again and have it strong and it can be and it will be.
Well, I, I think we've all had emails from different folks that wanted, I think, well.
I think the BIA is a very, very important organization in our town. I believe if we have any chance to revive it, encourage it, allow me to do so, and if we can hold off for a couple of months until it gets on its feet, going out and have in the meantime, well, staff, they will run through the business part of the BIA, is that correct? So what do we do there?
It means to just be meeting the financial obligations, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't be having any more meeting for.
No, no, with the financial, it would be complacent.
So how does that work then with budget? Because now we we would have had to submit the budget, which at that final meeting, the EGM, it was it was received, but not not approved. And I'm I'm just wondering, because all the municipality, like our municipality is going through the budget process, you know, so if we wait, are we too late? Because there is a deadline of having the budget submitted by November fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Past that. So what can happen? Can that carry on as the same budget as is in the past or how do we? We can't operate with the budget.
Yeah.
So how does, what does that look like then?
I don't have a a comment for that right now. I'd have to look into that.
Curious, because I know if we haven't, now we have not met those deadlines. And I know, yeah, when you go back over these the um, the bylaws, like they're so outdated and yet there were some changes, draft changes made that were still being implemented, yet they were never approved by council. That's crazy. So anyways. But yeah, I was just curious how that all works.
You have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I will add to further Mayor Jenkins' comments that we did receive an email from a representative of the business community who has been very vocal the last week or so uh, indicating that uh, they have gathered the names of ten individuals representing eight different businesses who are willing to make a commitment of their time to volunteer and join the BIA Board of Management. So um, we do have uh, written names, contact information and business names uh, for those individuals at this point who seem to be willing to uh, initially make that commitment to reform a board once we get the administrative pieces in place to do that.
Okay, so would you turn that to the court? Uh, in order, oh, for the ball?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just one comment I wanted to make. If you look at what the scope and nature of what a BIA can do, okay? Uh, it's fairly, it's reasonably broad and I'd really like to comment that the previous BIA took a particular direction. They did a very good job at it. They did accomplish a lot. Uh, and I think some of the comments that we've received over time, uh, as uh, uh, Council McGibben mentioned is a desire, now that those things are done, to to go in a bit of a different direction. So uh, again, I want to express my thanks to the previous board. They did accomplish a lot. And also look forward to what a new board can do to, you know, some of the things that um, you know, that they would like to accomplish as well. So, thank you.
It's helpful.
I think if we do not take the time to work with our business community, we'd be shooting ourselves in the face. So I think it's really important. I think this is a smart thing to do, to sort of delay it. I'm I'm ecstatic to read these letters of uh, people who feel feels like they have some energy, some focus, some direction. And I think it's imperative that we find a way to not put ourselves in a position where we completely dissolve thing that will be terrible to rebuild, but to work with these voices that are coming to the table. Uh, so I'm fully in favor of sort of extending, just sort of punking this down the road, delaying this for a little while, doing what we need to do, but making sure that we communicate with uh, uh, with our 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 business partners in order to keep uh, the BDI on the table and give them a voice to be, continue to move forward. I think it's imperative. So I'm fully in favor of this.
I agree. Um, would you like to read the amendment?
I can. So there's an amendment on the floor to the second uh, part of the resolution. Uh, to defer the dissolution process for sixty days to give the business community an opportunity to indicate their desire to join the Business Improvement Area Board.
That's, uh, is that what you wanted, uh, Mayor Jenkins?
I think that covers it and also it will uh, give some time. Uh, staff have some work to do as well. If we do get that indication early, like it sounds we have, and we get a commitment from these folks, then that will give staff even, they may even need some more time after that. So I would say, yeah, that's a a good abbreviated version of what I said.
Yeah, and you give them their, their support. So you think that amendment, has it moved in time?
Yes.
There's a, okay, all those in there?
Can I ask you again? Sorry, I just just sort of square my head. Um, so we're, we're still going to do the first part of this, as in the the financial piece, because somebody has to be resolved to run a bank account. And then we're allowing the business community to, we're not dissolving anything. We're just going to work with the business community and help them build a a board that would then take this forward.
And we're taking sixty days.
And we're sixty days. And this money piece is is not too quagmirey? That's easy enough for us to handle, like?
Um, yes.
But, okay.
Like the existing funds right now uh, in the bank account.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we know what the bills are that are coming in, you know, we have to pay.
Okay. I I just don't want to get caught up with sort of this bank stuff, right? It is sort of.
The amendment will um, just delay that uh, dissolving, dissolving took particularly.
Okay, sorry, didn't need to knock out, like.
Show, show state, oh, state that, yeah, yeah.
And within that sixty days, we will have time to sort out how we can, because we can't move forward without a budget.
Yeah.
You just can't.
Yeah, I will.
And bylaws, bylaws will be adjusted. The way, the way that sixty day period bylaws would be.
Um, I would be touching at the two thousand and fifteen bylaws. Oh, but you mean like the update? Yes, I I will, I will describe that.
Chairman, Deputy Deputy Mayor, you have a comment for on that?
Who takes your comment?
Uh, it's Jeff Weber from Leighton Chen. Just wondering during the sixty, the sixty days, is there some informal council meeting or something like we can do to keep the merchants involved in the development of this? To keep a sort of a get us momentum, because we don't want to wait sixty days and then there's going to be all the board elections. You're looking three, four months, perhaps six months down the road before we have a BDI.
I would assume this, I would assume that once this is passed, uh, there'll be a mechanism to 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 staff, for the people who wish to uh, be part of, part of the new board, to apply or whatever the the staff decide. So it's going to be done uh, soon, which you, you know, like, we don't want to wait till the sixty days drop and then start all over again until.
So does that look like an election then of the members or are you, are you going to appoint and then we elect the, like, it could be a point, people applications and we receive elevens, there's eleven possible seats. Then to those eleven, that eleven board members, is that where the election takes place for chair, vice chair, all of that?
Maybe a great call.
It's all right, we weren't expecting the question, but we have to wait that data bylaws, the procedural bylaws first. We can have a meeting with people who aren't part of a board. So we need to get the strength.
Be indicating their desire to be on, like, yeah.
So, so what we're saying is to the visiting, we were, was when you, it'll be looked into and and there'll be some mechanism to, for the, for the different people to, to put the name forward.
Mayor?
I think the sixty days.
Oh, uh, so, Paul?
The the six, the sixty days was only, uh, I only said sixty days to give the business community opportunity to round up the number of people that they they needed, because I think the bylaw right now says seven members for the BIA. By the sounds of things, uh, we may already be at that stage. So, um.
That's six hours.
Yeah. So that was just to give enough time, because Christmas is coming, you know, and the uh, the members are busy during Christmas. But that was just to give enough of a buffer to to determine that, to answer the question of the, uh, you know, the the gallery member there. Yeah, we don't have to wait the full sixty days to to do things if we do get an indication that there, the interest is there and that there is a commitment there to uh, to form a new board.
This, this one comment, uh, we have a lot of eager people that make this applicable to the grade. However, I think they need a bit of education as to what the BIA's rules, how they're under guidance, et cetera. So they, they can have that information before they jump on board. So I'm not sure.
And further, sorry, further to your point, Counsel Wiggins, and I think it was mentioned uh, by staff in their uh, report there. Uh, they have got a lot of updating to do of bylaws, et cetera, before the board can actually go into place. But my thought was, well, there's no point doing all that work if there was no interest. But obviously there is interest. So staff could start to proceed, um, you know, on getting what's required that a board, a new board could be formed. Sorry.
This is to remind you.
If I'm over there, this is still sounding a little vague to you. So what, what exactly can our business community expect? So the financial piece is going to be looked after, so their investment in their contributions is going to be safe. That's number one. There are bylaws that needs to be reviewed by staff. Is that a week? Is that two weeks? Is that three?
There is.
Is there an indication that can say to this community, we will, will be sort of a aware with some bylaws in a period of time?
I would say that um, they won't be coming to the member council, but they could come to January.
Okay, so we are looking at sixty days.
Would, yeah, I would.
We are, we are looking at sixty days.
You're looking at three or four months before you actually form a board. You're gonna have to hire a staff person, all of that.
And and would then would the board be responsible for that piece or you're saying the town is going to take that piece on?
Once the board was established, that would be a decision of the board, whether they wanted the town to maintain the treasury functions or whether they want to do that like the old BIA's.
Right.
Our recommendation is that we would continue to support the financial pieces while the new board uh, transitioned and came up to speed and.
That's fair.
Um, but, but we cannot manage that board.
So if if I'm over there, I'm thinking February, I will be likely sitting at the table with all these names that have made a commitment to the local business community and to the town. And that's who they're contributing to is the town overall and themselves. But I can sort of now think that it's going to be February. I will be sitting at a table with a formation of uh, uh, sort of staff and the seven names that they have. So I just, because I don't, there, if I, I'm saying everything we just said, I would walk out of here and think, what does this mean? So I think some true context has to be stated to people who come into the room and truly have support letters that say, and I bet you they're going to run down the street tomorrow. So there has to be some understanding to them about what needs to occur on this side. So that's all I'm asking for is, as a past business owner, some true context that says to me exactly when I, so February is likely when a board will actually be formed, maybe, that would be your best case scenario. And then likely then the pieces of what the new bylaws will bring to the table, they will run with.
Yeah.
And then, so they really can't do anything for a couple of months. Just stay organized themselves, uh, work towards the benefit of this, keep themselves engaged and eager. But the sense of actually sitting down with town is not going to occur until then. Okay?
I think the biggest, the biggest step we can do is we're going to support them as much as we can.
Agreed.
And and it's going to take a couple of months to get that.
I I have no doubt and I I think that leaning towards that is just with, when that kind of question is asked, that's exactly what I would walk over the room with.
For a bit more, once you hypothetically approve the bylaws, the procedural bylaws and stuff in January. Um, that's when we would post the call for committee representatives. So you would have to apply to be on the the BIA board.
There, yeah.
That has to be a fair, open, public uh, process. If there are only eight or ten people, then they would form the board. If there are twenty, then there would be elections uh, based on, you know, what the membership wants to have, um, to actually form and determine who's on that board. And then once the board is formed, they would choose their chair and their secretary and all of that, other stuff.
So happy sales for Christmas, stay engaged and know that the council does support this. And you know, I've been here for six years and I've never looked at the BIA bylaws. So that means we've never, we haven't done anything with them. So this is kind of timely in, I guess, in essence for that piece. So this new board coming in actually will have the latest and greatest of what any kind of changes have occurred through the municipal act regarding the BIA and what's happened with council on the BIA. Okay, thank you. And I I don't need to question, I get it. It's just, we sit here and hear all this about the group and it makes sense, but I don't know that everybody else got, I don't want to have any frustration. This is very good. Based on these two reports that are attached with your report. So keeping them really at the table, I think is the best thing we can do.
I think the number of board members currently is supposedly, I heard eleven, seven?
Seven to eleven, I think.
Seven to eleven?
Seven is the minimum, eleven is the maximum. Given the two thousand and fifteen bylaw.
Okay. And that doesn't include like, I know there's sub councils, subgroups in the committee, right?
Yes, maybe, that's right.
Okay, but the main board members is seven to eleven.
Yeah.
Can you read Paul's amendment? Is the word dissolution or dissolution still in there?
Um, yes, to defer the dissolution process for sixty days. Why can't we just get rid of that entirely out there? It's not what
defer it, we don't even want it to happen ever.
I think we probably, if someone chose to make an amendment, could amend to say direct staff to begin drafting updated bylaws, procedurals, procedures.
Oh, my God, please.
Uh.
Oh, my God. That's right.
At this point, it it would seem that there is enough interest to do.
Got a motion table, I can, when they have a motion, table.
Yeah, um.
But I can't make the motion and I can't admit to the place.
Well, I, 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 just, but that's piece of that.
I think for, that's what you were saying, if that's still in there, it still looks like there's potential for it, not.
Not a role in the right list.
Right?
The new one will override this. Well, the, you, the even the amendment with, all of all the amendments doing now is both twenty and sixty. all, all the amendments you're doing now is both pointing to six cases. So, I don't.
Yeah, but like, yes.
I'm okay to a friendly amendment to the amendment.
Okay. George seconded it, I think, so.
Sorry, what is the amendment? Amendment to direct staff to begin to update bylaws and relevant procedures with the intent of establishing or reforming whichever reinstating uh, the BBI.
Who? I didn't worry about. I've got a, hmm, but, you left that there. Do we need to go down all the amendments or this is that?
I, I think you can have an amendment to amendment, can't you?
It, it's fine, it'll be a friendly amendment. Um, don't worry, I won't amend that one.
I, I don't know, I just think communication is everything and I think the wrong wording can just get out there and it can go the wrong way. I don't want it to look like we're still pleading to dissolve it.
I'm good.
So, we're still giving the business community the opportunity, but we're deleting the dissolution um, process and the sixty days.
Getting good, the whole get.
Uh, uh, Andrea had the wording correct, whatever Andrea just said there.
That was me, she was doing like.
Wait, I might be sick, but I'm not silly. No, so whatever Andrea said made perfect sense.
The, I mean. I'm waiting.
Okay.
I made the amendment, George seconded the amendment.
So, we got your homework, so uh, to what we are voting on is that the town will take over during the, the, the financial part of it. And then the, the second part is, will you, you, you read that amendment that we're.
Um, so I still have, uh, give the business community an opportunity to indicate their desire to join the Business Improvement Area Board and to direct staff to update the bylaws and procedures uh, to reform the BIA.
Okay, that's, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, thank you. Uh, that's good. Bylaw.
Yes.
Okay, first, second and third reading, be resolved at the following bylaw. Being reduced to the first, second and third time in the form of the past and that the mayor in thirty nine is still saying any rule of this conference in the conference, no withstand. Bylaw number sixty-two dash twenty twenty-four, being a bylaw to amend by law number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, being a bylaw to adopt a tipping piece scheduled for the December gang week, this total site for the town Vanacop. Bylaw number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, being a bylaw to amend by law number twelve dash two zero two three, being a bylaw to appoint committee members to various board committees, transmission for the town Vanacop. Movement in second, sir? Yeah, move by Councilor Lawrence, second to Councilor, uh, again, any question? All those in favor? That's Terry. Thank you very much, Paul. Uh, we have a closed session of council, so uh, we'll move into talk to move, to take the ten members. Moving in the closed session, being resolved at the council of the corporation of the town Vanacop that hereby moves the closed session pursuant to the municipal act episode twenty-one, there one type one, two thirty-nine, two K, a possession plan pursuant to byteria or instruction to be applied of any negotiation fair on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. The non-nature of very weak and poor. Movement in second. So, those, Councilor Miles, second to Councilor Eastman, all those in favor? Very, thank you.